We will have our invocation by Pastor Shaw. He'll be back this church.
Thank you so much. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, as we come together, looking over the past weekend, celebrating the freedoms we have in this nation. The Declaration of Independence, Lord, it reminds us of your hand upon us. Truly, Lord, we are one nation under God. And I pray, Lord, that everything we do would be with that in mind, whether it's in life, with our families, with our churches, or even with our council meetings. Lord, help us to keep you first. We pray, God, for your blessing upon all those who are in our council. Or we pray that you would bless them, meet their needs, or work in their lives as they are, seeking to make this a better place. Pray for all those who are here today and those who are not, Lord, in our community. We pray for your hand upon all of us. Help us to make this a better place. We also pray, Lord, for those families that are grieving the loss of their children, their loved ones in Texas. God, we just pray for your healing, your comfort to be upon them. Pray, Lord, that through all this, that you would bring about something good, as you always do. We pray, God, that Jesus Christ would be glorified in some way through all this that is going on. God, we pray also for our men and women in uniform all across the world, especially on this Fourth of July weekend. We pray for your blessing upon them, for your protection upon them. We love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Right now, we're going to have the ABC Composite Board to reappoint members and chair to the ABC Board. Do we have Dorothy Gooch here? All right, thank you. We've got the public comments, and just a reminder that you... We do? Still, you still vote on it? So right here, we have to appoint the reappoint members and chair to ABC Board. So I guess we take that in a motion.
You've got a motion.
Second?
One second.
We've got a motion and a second?
That's for reappointment of...
Reappointment, yes.
Roddy Drake and Ann Tucker.
That's correct.
We've got a motion and a second, and a discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. The public comments, a reminder, you've got three minutes. And please, when you come, to give your name and your address. First, we have Angie Ryan's Fire Department and Rescue Squad.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Angie Ryan, and I reside in the ETJ Zone at 327 Franklin Road. And I am speaking tonight to address the ongoing issue of our county fire department and the need to move forward with the recommendations of the fire studies from the past. The community deserves professional, consistent, and reliable emergency response. Two independent fire studies commissioned by this county have clearly shown that Vance County Fire Department is essential and should remain in operation as fully staffed, full-time department. Both studies warned that restructuring to a part-time volunteer department would result in increased response times, reduced coverage, and higher risk to life and property. This department must remain fully staffed and full-time. Our growing community cannot afford to rely on a volunteer-only fire service. Volunteer departments are crucial, and they are partners, but they cannot provide the 24/7 guaranteed staffing needed for fast, effective emergency response. Response time does matter. A fully-staffed fire department means trained professionals are on duty and ready to go immediately, not minutes or hours away, depending on who's available. It was also my understanding that the fire study recommended the rescue squad be managed under the fire department to ensure unified command, efficient resource allocation. I'm sorry. I usually have this written out, trying to be tech savvy. An improved emergency response times. It will also improve this professional recommendation reinforces the need for a fully-staffed, full-time fire department, not a reduction or reliance on volunteer model. Centralizing operations under the fire department structure enhances accountability and ensures that life-saving services remain coordinated and dependable for our entire community. This is not a time to weaken our emergency services. This is a time to enforce them. And it should be based on the facts presented from the two studies, not on personal agendas. I urge you to follow the guidance of the studies and listen to the residents you serve and make the responsible choice. The discussion time is over. It is now time for action. Keep Vance County Fire Department open as a fully-staffed and full-time department and move forward with placing the Vance Rescue Squad under the Vance County Fire Department, as recommended in both studies. Our lives may depend on it, and we, the people, are counting on each and every one of you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Steve Lyles, Vance County Rescue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Lyles. I live in northern Kitterell area, Bear Pond area. I was a lieutenant on the Vance County Sheriff's Department, retired in 2011, started in '83. In 1996, I joined the Bear Pond Fire Department. In '99, I was on the Vance County Rescue Squad. I gave up all these in 2011 due to health and medical issues. I was the chairman of the Board of Directors at the Bear Pond Fire Department at that time. I was chairman of the Board of Directors at the Vance County Rescue Squad at that time, as well as head of investigations in the Sheriff's Department for many years before I retired. I just wanted to point out, and hope you all have done a little investigating to understand more about the Vance County Rescue Squad. It has a vital part in this county. I can tell you from what I have seen through my years in law enforcement, and that's why I ended up out of part of it, because we'd be out on the lake for days looking for drowning victims, sometimes 10 or 12 days before the bodies would be found. And we depended on the Vance County Rescue Squad for boat. And we, I, or somebody else from Sheriff's Department would be with them all the time while they're on the lake. Many, many other times. And now, a very important thing, and I don't know how much you'll learn about this, but the Vance County Rescue Squad goes to about every fire call and most wrecks in Vance County. And they do more than just supply air or help. Last Thursday, there was a vehicle hit a building in the gas main, and the gas was leaking. The chief, Doyle Carpunk, he was on Raleigh Road for an hour blocking traffic himself. He didn't have to do that. He did that to help, because if it wasn't a deputy, it would have tied up the Sheriff's Department all that time. And I could sit here and give you many, many, many more examples. I've been listening to the scanner since COVID, when things got boring around the house, and I started keeping up with what goes on. And I encourage some of you all to get you a scanner and listen and know what's happening in this county. The Vance County Rescue Squad is an important part. And I also wanted to point out that to get on the Vance County Rescue Squad, you don't have to be a particular class, minority, white, black, brown, whatever. But the majority of the members of the Vance County Rescue Squad were the elite from the rural fire departments here. In fact, you've got chiefs, you've got former chiefs, you've got active chiefs now from other departments that are part of the rescue squad. It's like at church, you have that 10% that volunteer and do all the work at church or any other group, your public organization. You're talking about that 10%, and then you've got the best of that 10% that want to do more and get on the Vance County Rescue Squad. When you have a disaster or something in this area, you've got the best of the best going for the Vance County Rescue Squad. I can attest to you that. That's why I got interested and got on it, because I wanted to do what I could do for my area, my neighborhood, the whole county, basically, for the amounts to... I can tell you reasoning for me joining Bear Pond and the Rescue Squad, the things I saw while I was working at the Sheriff's Department. But I encourage you all, keep the Vance County Rescue Squad as it is. It's an important part of this county. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Please forgive me for this last name. Honor, Arnold Far? Far? Trying to figure out the last part. Little issue. What is it?
Far.
Far. Okay, I went off.
Good afternoon, Councilman. My name is Arnold Far, and on behalf of Environmental Waste...
He gave you your address, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said 1314 Lehman Street. And on behalf of Environmental Waste and Debris Remover LLC, I would like to partner with Vance County to help clean up trash and debris throughout business and neighborhoods throughout Vance County. It's a widespread issue that arises from a combination of individual behaviors, efficiencies, and environmental factors. Unintentional littering, improper waste disposal, examples, illegal dumping, overflowing dumpsters, human neglect, ignoring anti-littering laws, commercial and industrial business, unregulated disposal of packing material, construction debris, weather and natural forces, and rain contribute to spread of trash across business and neighborhoods. Storms can lead to a sudden and significant amount of trash and debris. Overgrown vegetation and abandoned areas that are not... Excuse me. That are often neglected and not regularly maintained. Results of trash and debris blocking drainage systems can lead to a cascade of environmental infrastructures and public health issues. Flooding can result in damaging roads, buildings, and other infrastructures. Environmental degradation of trash swept into waterways contributing to pollution, harmful aquatic life, and diminishing of the quality of drinking water. Public health risks, stagnant water creates a breeding ground for mosquitoes, and also decomposing waste and drainage systems can release harmful bacteria and toxins, poisoning of health hazards in nearby communities. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Make sure we get Kelly. He said he wanted partnership.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Brandon Smith, Smart City Grant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandt Smith. I'm from Durham, North Carolina. I just wanted to come introduce myself. I'm the president of SJS Contracting. We're a licensed general contractor out of Durham. I'm a LEED-certified AP, which is a leadership in energy and environmental design. And just wanted to introduce myself in regards to smart cities as the local communities and surrounding areas continue to migrate to a more digital age. I just want to make my services out there available and aware of what SJS can do. I have over 20 years of commercial construction experience and look forward to potentially partnering and working with the county in the future.
Right, thank you. Dr. Kay, I'm gonna let you announce your last name.
Greetings, members of the council. It's an honor to be here today. I see you have a lot in common with a lot of people here, so I know I'm at home. Chairman Faines, thank you for having me. Ms. Renee Perry, thank you. In the interest of time, I'm a...
Name and address.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Dr. Kay Allenubia, address is 509 West North Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603. The name of our organization is the Magnetic Lighthouse Community Development Corporation. Actually, it's Magnetic Lighthouse Community and Economic Development Corporation. One of our goals is to build an economic ecosystem that enables 2,000 companies to hit a half a million dollars in revenue. Last year, I helped my first client go from $40,000 in revenue to over $2 million in revenue. So if I may read this statement. "We respectfully seek your letter of support for Vance County's application, for our application to the National Science Foundation's $1.5 million Smart and Connected Communities Grant. Our vision is to make Vance County a model for smart city innovation by blending advanced technology, including digital twins, QR codes, and GEO codes, with our community, with Vance County's heritage and future development. Digital twins are highly detailed virtual 3D models of real places. They allow us to measure twice and cut once by planning, simulating, and refining projects, such as renovations and new construction. In the digital environment, before any work begins, Dr. Covey has a concept. He says the seven habits of highly effective people begin with the end in mind, where you create two visions. The first vision is one that's in the mind, and the second one you create physically. This approach will help us spot problems early, optimize solutions, and ensure that our investments are sustainable and efficient." A standout example of our proposed... A standout example is our proposed Veterans Holographic Memorial. By integrating digital twin technology with QR codes and GEO codes, we can create an interactive memorial experience. Visitors will be able to use their smartphones to scan QR codes at the site, instantly accessing stories, photos, and historical context about local veterans. GEO codes can guide users to other important landmarks, creating a digital network of talking landmarks throughout Vance County. This not only brings history to life and connects generations, but also demonstrates how a smart city tools can honor the past while inspiring the future. Our vision extends to smart buildings and smart city models, using digital twins as a guide to design energy-efficient and public safety features of new facilities going forward. So we're submitting for this smart grant. I've had five colleges, North Carolina A&amp;T, Central State, as clients over the past 20 years. And we need your help. There's no risk to the county. The only thing I'm asking you for is a letter, so that my team can go to work. And in the words of President Kennedy, ask not what your country can do for you, instead, ask what you can do for your country. And what we've done is we take the initiative to create a value proposition. We've been in the neighborhood for four months doing our homework. And now we're ready, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Lonnie Mitchell, Water. Lonnie Mitchell. Mary Sue Williams.
Good evening. My name is Mary Susan Williams. I live at 109 West Lake Drive in the city limits of Henderson. Sometimes I wonder how we are a tier-one county, and then I look at things, and that have happened, and say, how are we not a tier-one county? And what can we do to change it? What are we doing to attract businesses, to grow our tax base? Counties around us are moving ahead by leaps and bounds. Are we doing things that show prospective business owners that the people they want to move here and work at their businesses will be happy doing that? Are our schools enticing people to come here? Not only do you have to attract the businesses, but you have to attract the people to want to move here and work for these businesses. How the county moves and grows is in your hands. As disappointed as I am about the tax rates, I could at least reconcile if there was something really positive going on, like taking a stand for teachers and the support staff for this county. Once again, I was disappointed. We thought the tax rate would come down too, but it did not. Our teachers asked for more money, which in turn would help our county and show that we understand and appreciate all that they do. But what do they think now? Do they feel valued? Do they feel appreciated? I think it was a mistake not to take this chance. Our children deserve better. It has been a difficult year for Henderson. It's not been easy watching what goes on in Henderson in the news, things people and their businesses all over North Carolina see. Certainly, what they see certainly does not entice them to move here or spend time in our area at times. How do I explain our tax rate to people interested in our area? I think we missed an opportunity to lift us up. I hope we eventually don't end up in the news for lack of support for our teachers and staff, too. The one thing you could do to put a good spotlight on Henderson is Vance County has so much to offer and build on. I know most of you see that, if not all of you. I just hope we can come together and find a way to push it forward and no longer be a tier-one county.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Right now, we have appointments. Frankie Noble, Employee Engagement Team.
Good evening, Commissioner. So, you know, we've had a several couple of months that we didn't have an Employee of the Month, and we've got some great employees here in Vance County. So the engagement team come up with a new SOP that we're going to run through our committee. And if we don't get a nomination for the peers, everybody stays busy, and we understand it's hard to get the nominations in. So the committee's going to take longevity, and we're going to have 12 names, and we're going to go through them names. And out of the 12, we're going to pick somebody. We're going to send that name to their supervisor to make sure that they've met the qualifications that we see within our SOPs that we've done, our criteria. So this month, our Employee of the Year has been employed with Vance County 28 years. I think he's looking at retiring very soon. And that is Mr. Dorwood Campbell with the Vance County Sheriff's Office. So I'm gonna let the sheriff say a few words about Mr. Campbell, and then we'll present his... Sheriff?
Good afternoon. Dorwood Campbell started his career at the Vance County Sheriff's Office in 1997, retired at the end of July of this year with 28 years of service.
Congratulations, Captain Campbell.
Started as promoted as 2007 to sergeant, promoted in 2017 to lieutenant. His final promotion, 2021, as a captain over the patrol division, charged with the assignment and service training for the entire sheriff office, assigning warrants and other criminal papers, and running the entire patrol division. His exemplary status with the sheriff office, we worked back to back. I supervised him when I was on the patrol division. He'd been a great commander and a leader for this office. We're going to miss him. Him and I used to challenge each other, who served the most papers back when I was on patrol division, and was always tit-for-tat, how many arrests and how many criminal papers we would serve. And he was always an outstanding employee. He always set initiative. Tell him warrants, and he got the job done. And that's what kind of employees that the Vance County Sheriff's Office look for. And congratulations on your retirement and your endeavors, and moving on with your family. Also, on top of that, being in law enforcement, he's worked with EMS for the last 10 years in the surroundings of Vance County, Warren County, and Franken County. So he's a public servant, a true public servant, and we thank you.
Thank you for the hard work that you do. Right now, we're going to have appointment. Sheriff Curtis Brain for the Detention Center update. Yes, it's all yours.
First, I'd like to thank our candid manager for putting together the idea of having a maintenance team at the detention center. For my entire career, we only had one person to work at the detention center maintenance. And she's come together, and I'd like to thank Frankie Nobles, who was project manager and leading that team and getting a lot of things accomplished at the detention center. Because I can tell you right now, I'm not a maintenance person. I'm a law enforcement officer. As of July the 2nd, we housed 47 inmates. Today, with bringing in the population for the courts that we had, CMS Court today, we had 52. And hopefully, that will get back down to about mid... Get down to about mid-20s, once someone will be going through department corrections and others will be going back outsourced to the counties and where they came from. We have inmates housed as far as Cherokee County, up in the mountain, next to the Tennessee border. So that put a lot on our staff. Thanks to my new captain, Katrina, at the detention center, we hired eight new officers. And hopefully, within the next 20 days, we'll have five more that will be coming onboard. And we'll be sending those eight officers, well, six of those eight officers, to detention officer training class. Contraband has greatly diminished within, with the written correction plan addressed, and the issue was submitted to DHHS. Body worn cameras being utilized for the first time at the detention center. We've come up with a policy, and our detention officers are utilizing them anytime they come in contact with the population and having a reason to do so. The comprehensive plan of correction was submitted to DHS as scheduled, and inspection was conducted by Chief Jail Inspector and his staff during the week of June 16th. Further measures are being taken to address the issues noted during the inspection. However, the greatest reason of concern involves the video system and the high end of ticket items. These areas will be addressed by Mosley, who's here today. All doors can be locked and secured, and all dormitories, all food passes can be locked. If you don't know what a food passage is, it's a little space just cut into the door where we feed. We don't have to open the door to feed them. All of those are operational. All showers and sinks and toilets are in working order. Hot and cold water now working in all sinks. All showers have been cleaned and sanitized. All light fixtures have been cleansed. All vents have been cleansed. The drop ceiling tiles have been placed and are being repaired as needed. New metal detectors installed and operational. As I spoke with the captain and the major today, we implemented the plan and the policy that we will be scanning all our employees that will be coming in in a common area, and they will be scanned and searched as they come in. This is for the employees, the one that we suspect are bringing contraband into our facilities. So this has been diminished with the change of the culture of how we're operating. I let all new employees know that we're no longer operating the way we were operated last week. We're moving forward. We're changing the culture. Different things are changing. We've got new people in place to run that detention center. So that's been a big help. The vent hood in the kitchen has been repaired. The fire system is now upgraded to fully functional and compliant. General cleaning issues has been corrected, meaning there were the inmates who were cleaned up in their cells where they were leaving the broom handles, the brooms, and they were popping the doors and messing up the hinges. We're taking that from once they get through cleaning, we take those tools away from them. We're still allowing them to clean, be sanitized, but we're taking those tools away from them once they're cleaning, so they're not allowed to continue to do damage to our facilities. Each dorm painted and has been completed. Gas lines have been painted, and the roof has identified the gas lines. They were not like that before. Awaiting installation and new video system through the facility. Awaiting repairs and upgrade. And the command center station, which is the command center, is the booth station. We've got a lot of work to do. We've got several dorms are cleaned out and ready for total renovation. So hopefully, you all move forward and go ahead and allow Mosley and Bardo to go ahead and move forward, so we can get these things done. I believe that Frankie Nobles and his team has done all they can do, so we need to let some professionals with skill sets and tools come in and do this job.
You provided some pictures this evening. They were dated in June.
Sir?
There were some pictures provided to us tonight that were taken in the jail in June. Are those things that have been torn up since we repaired them? Or are they existing issues?
I believe Frankie can speak more on that than I can. I can just tell you what report that I have, that we have dorms already. We have, you know, we're down to the capacity of 47 inmates. We have, you know, we're down to the capacity of 47 inmates and probably will be down to about 25 to 30, probably midweek. And I just think we need to move forward. Yeah, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, just beyond what Frankie M. has been doing.
Well, what we're talking about, Sheriff, it said, you know, there are some damages that was done in dorm A, where there was house after repair, repairs had been done in each cell. For example, included our holes in walls and ceilings, this is what we have. Two-way communication ripped, let me finish, two-way communication ripped out of the walls, light damaged from applying toothpaste and newspaper, also prying them open to get inside a wiring, damaged showers by prying them out of the wall. You just said all showers were working, but we got a report that they've been damaged again. This happened while two mates was there, and we also had to go back and spend additional money in repairing what we've already fixed. So, my question is, what has been done about this? Where has inmates charged for the damage they caused? And how did this happen with staff watching them? What is your supervision? You say you're not a maintenance, you're a law enforcement, but you should have a professional staff there that should be supervising your inmates. And you just said you got a new major, so what is really going on there? We keep spending money in the same area that we're fixing.
Ma'am, I don't care what detention center across the state of North Carolina, across the United States, you cannot stop inmates from tearing up a jail or any facility.
So, it's a factor.
When, when I was down there today, was making around myself and the major, I got a complaint of an inmate just jumping and trying to turn the bed, ripped the bed away from the wall. Yes, it's going to happen, yes, we're going to have to repair it. Can we stop it? No, we cannot completely stop it.
So, how's your, how, what did your supervision look like? It's a major, who's supervising these inmates? What do your rounds look like? That's what we need to know.
Our rounds had increased, this, we still have some deficiencies. We're not perfect. Like I said, we just got eight new employees, the employees got to be trained, we're still utilizing deputies, they're on the nights and weekends, they're not detention officers, they're assisting the detention officers, the two detention officers are staffed on nights and weekends.
So, who responsible for supervising inmates?
The detention officers, oh, ma'am.
They are not what? You say you have...
Two, on nights and weekends, you have two detention officers and then two deputies assisting them.
How many did you hire?
We hired eight, but these officers got to be trained also, they got to be sent off to detention officer training. It's a process.
My original question was, we got these pictures tonight, are they things that had been damaged? And you said you didn't know.
I haven't seen those pictures, so I can't.
Frankie, could you, could you tell us?
I cannot comment on any pictures I haven't seen. Commissioner Brummett and Chairperson, these pictures, I can't tell you when they were taken, I can't tell you if there was these old damages, this is something new.
Frankie, can you tell us? So, can you tell us? They new damaged, these are the one we have repaired, right? And now they damaged again.
So, we just sanitized the showers, and now somebody's tearing the rails on the sides of it all.
The shower that you, it's in the picture, the inmates are allowed one hour...
One hour.
To be out for rec time. And it's, what, two inmates at a time?
If this is four, the whole cell, the whole four cell.
So, they, while they were out, they were able to get that shower and pull it out of the wall. So, we had to get the shower back in the wall, resecure it back to the wall. They ended, they do them again, so we can start back fixing it and repairing it again.
So, those on supervision, Sheriff couldn't tell who were responsible for that? Could they be charged for damages?
That is, that is one problem that we have had for numerous, a long period of time, the camera system, the camera system and the booth operators, the booth operators do not have direct line of sight. So, the booth operator...
I'm asking, do they, someone let them out to go to shower, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they ought to know who went to that shower and tore it up in an hour, right?
Not the four people, they don't know which one, and they're not going to tell them one another, they did not see them. You can't, you can't witness a person taking a shower.
I know that, I'm pretty sure, I'm glad you're not.
Yeah.
Can I ask him a couple?
Yes, go ahead.
Sheriff, I understand the number of people that you're hiring, and I'm thankful for that, and I appreciate you finding those and getting those. Is any of those people you're hiring going to be detention officers in the jail?
Yes, sir.
So, you've been short of people to police the jail, is that what I'm hearing?
For a very long time.
So, are you going to be able in the future to have somebody more police in the jail?
That's, that's the plan, yes, sir.
All right, the second part I have for you is, the jail, as far as that's concerned, some of the damages that are called, or the inmates are doing them, so you got to police it closely. However, some of that's because of the jail being so old. I might as well bring this up.
So old and lack of staffing.
So, in essence, that's part of the deal, but how many of these D.O.C. officers that you're hiring will be detention officers to help police the jail?
All of them.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Great, we, you think we can get it way down to zero?
I hope so.
That would be a good one.
It would.
And we save this county money, too.
Yes, it would. But Chairperson, lack of staffing, the way that jail is designed...
We're aware of that, we already established, we need a new jail, that's not the issue, we know that.
And even with four people...
Staff, we know that, we understand.
Even with four people working that facility is hard, the way that jail's designed to watch four inmates at a time.
But what I'm saying is, yes, we keep spending money in the same, we just fixed these items, and in the same area, that's, I think that's the issue. And that's why I said, you got, how many you got doing, you got, you got a new major, you say, how many detentions people you have, officers during the day?
During the day?
So, they take showers at night? At night or throughout the day?
No, ma'am, no. We used to try to stop everything by 6 o'clock when shift change, when you have more people working during the day.
During the day?
Yes.
So, if you have more during the day...
But that more during the day, we have courts, we have people transporting all across the whole state of North Carolina. Half his staff may be on the highway transporting inmates, or sitting in the courtroom, moving inmates.
Any more questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
I just, I'd just like to see a greater level of prosecution on damage to the cells.
Well, until we have a facility where we can lock down two people in a cell and you can determine who's doing it, when you got four people, it's just like stopping a car. We got four people in a car, and you got a bag of marijuana, who you going to charge?
We charge all four.
That's easy to say, charge all four, when it's your child, your child just having, riding in a car.
All right, thank you. My next appointment is County Manager Renee Perry, Mosley Architects and Products Construction.
Yes, ma'am.
Detention Center construction contract.
So, this is a good segue after the Sheriff's presentation about the detention center for Bordeaux Construction, as well as Mosley Architects, who is our design build team, to come up and just have a conversation about their assessment thus far, and I discussed the contract with you all, I sent the contract to you all last week, so if you have any questions, this will be the time to address that. Y'all can come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Blair Bordeaux, I'm President of Bordeaux Construction, and Todd Davis, VP of Mosley. As you know, you've advertised an RFQ for the design build, so that concludes the renovation Phase 1, as well as the Phase 2, which is the design and construction of the new facility. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the design build process or any of the scope of some of our preliminary walkthroughs of the facility.
Can I ask him that?
Yes, go ahead.
It's okay. In your design bill that we're looking at as far as the jail is concerned, when, I'm trying to get a timeline, so the timeline I'm trying to answer is, is so when do you need to know about location?
So, if you're answering, if you're asking the question about the new facility?
Yes.
Okay, so the new facility would have advanced planning, which we would help with site analysis, we could start that process conceptually through probably SD, which is 30% design without a site selected.
Well, what I'm asking is, that's great, but what I'm really asking is, the site that you need to collect, be on, how much in advance, so how long before we need to be determining that answer?
By the time we, we, our plan was to start the renovation at the current one at the same time we start the design on the new. Before we need the site, we could get through, pretty much through schematic design phase.
Well, let me, let me read, let me boil this down, 12 months?
Probably more like six months.
Six months, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
So, do you want to speak on your assessment when you all did the walkthrough? I believe it's been two weeks ago, and...
Yeah, July 1st.
Okay.
Primarily, the focus on July 1st was to look at the cameras and security electronic system. And the first thing that we noticed, it's, it's not a digital system, but it's, it's got a decoder in it that allows it to be an analog camera system, it goes through a decoder, and then puts it back to a digital picture, which is very difficult to see. The, probably the most alarming thing we saw about that was, there's one server. Typically, about 55 to 60 camera is about all one server can stand. That one's got over 90 to it. The day we went there, there was 22 that would not work. And I think from, from what the staff said, from who was there, that's constant, it's constant. I think Frankie said that they, they can never keep that up. So, one, that needs to be changed right off the bat. Some of the other things that we saw, the Sheriff is right about the way the control center is set up, or C2 is what they call it, it's the one that looks into ABC and D. It's, you can only see, you can't see the upper tier, and you can't see the end tiers. The shower you can't see, and you can't see this tier from the control room. So, the way that should be designed is so that person can control and look through the glass and witness inmates at the same time. So, that's a little bit part of the problem. The damage that we saw, I had a big concern with because there were things tore up that you're not going to tear up with your hands. Locks tore completely apart, wiring removed, I mean, it's, it's stuff that you got to have tools to do. So, I was glad to hear the Sheriff talk about the increase in supervision. Your jail is about 60 years old. So, you know, replacing stuff like the wedge locks that are in there, there are some operations that need to be changed. Every time you let that inmate out of that cell, Vance County, what, two years ago, spent quite a bit of money on what they call a wedge lock that mounts to the outside of the door. When those doors open, then the inmate has access to everything that's in the inside of it there. So, the way they're supposed to be, you let the inmate out, you shut the door behind them, they can't get to that. No way they could have got to the inside of that lock, one, with their hands, whether it was left open or not, but two, if it was closed, they couldn't get to it. So, you know, it's, you got some, you got some very old jail, you got some very improper sightlines. And then you couple that with a minimum amount of staff, way understated. Staffing's going to continue to be a problem. It's not just here, you know, it's everywhere. I'm working in Columbia, South Carolina right now, they are 160 short. So, don't feel like the long range of being short, it's just tough to keep staff. You can't get those sightlines better, and you can't get control over when these inmates come out and who comes out. If they come out and tear up the shower, and you know who comes out, then you can charge them. So, all my years running the jail and all my years working in architecture, there's two, there's two problems from my, my perspective. One, your jail is too old to try to patch. You've got to increase that supervision better. You, there's no way around it. But you can't do that with one or two, you can't do that with one or two people. It's just, the jail is spread out, you got three different control rooms, probably only need one to try to consolidate that better. The sightlines need to be made better. It's just, you're, in my opinion, you're in a bad situation.
Can I ask, can I ask him one question? I hope you will keep in mind where we're headed.
Yes, sir.
And I know technology today is a whole lot better than it was about 10 years ago, in that case, 30 years ago. And I just hope you'll keep in mind that whatever you do down there, it's an investment that we're making as far as that's concerned. However, if it will be able to be used in the future where we're headed, I hope you'll keep that in mind, too.
We've got, we've got a meeting scheduled on the night to talk about scoping for the renovation.
Right.
There's different things that by code, that if we try to do to that existing jail, then that means you got to, now you've got to put sprinkler systems in the whole jail.
I know, I know.
You know, smoke control.
So, you got to be careful.
So, we want to look to try to maximize as many beds as we can without you throwing a lot of money on it.
Well, and that's what we want, too, as far as that's concerned, because, you know, at one time, we were looking at using the old jail in Granville County, and we went into the same situation, you know what I'm talking about, the same situation. So, in essence, in the future, just whatever, just keep that in mind as far as that's...
Yeah, thanks, thanks, as far as camera systems, you know, adding some cameras to that system that you have, now, you're going to have to update that system at the old jail regardless.
That's what I thought.
If you're planning on using it for another six months, you're going to need to update that. Is, is to try to be able to use some of those cameras, not in the new jail from day one, but they can maybe be spare cameras, what we call added stock. So, when you put a new building together, you have some on the shelf, so if one goes bad. You know, I hate you to spend money on cameras and then, you know, a year later or so, you can't use them.
Do you have a price tag on it, on them camera, you said six months? What'd you estimate that would be, if we had to put cameras in to renovate that?
We, we really, that's the purpose of our meeting on the night.
So, we're going to lose money anyway.
What our balance is trying to do, is trying to see how many beds we can get operable versus you spending money to house them out of county. So, how many of those cells, so if it's cheaper for you to house more out of county than it is to fix it, then that would be our...
Yeah, thank you, yes.
I hope that, hope that...
Yeah, that helped me, that helped me a lot.
And you're limited on what you're going to be able to fix.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of, a lot of the repairs that have been done in the past were done with traditional conduit and those kind of things, where it's pretty easy to, to go back and pry it loose and do those things.
Some of it, you've got a very, very unusual intercom system. In a jail, most intercoms are located either 18 inches off the door or beside the door with a push button that reaches the control room that allows them to know that inmate needs help or whatever, they need to communicate. In your jail, your intercom is up in the light, in the wall that lights the cell, and then there's a button beside the door. We talked about this earlier. What we want to do is look and see if that conduit or that push button is big enough to where we can replace it, because your intercoms don't work. And that, I've reviewed your jail inspections, and that's continuous two-way communications, not even there. And that's what you get wrote up for. If we can make the new intercom and push button fit in that same conduit, that's, that's going to be great. But that's where Blair and our security people kind of come to play to see if that'll work. I haven't seen intercoms in light fixtures since old, old DOC buildings. I mean, it's just...
I haven't seen them in 22 years, yeah. It's, that's a...
Well, that's a 1968 thing, huh?
So, would you both be open to come into a work session, and obviously, in our work session, just to discuss new construction? We talked about that earlier today, or a work session, so the commissioners can give you an idea of what they want the new facility to look like, just have those conversations? Okay, all right.
Any more discussion, questions?
So, the only request that I have tonight is just to appoint Jonathan and myself to continue negotiating the design build contract and get that approved. That's the only request that I have tonight.
You want a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Of a motion, a second, and a discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I have it, thank you.
Clarify.
Let me, let me clarify, and let's do that again. What we're asking for is for you guys to approve the contract, subject to mine and the county manager's review, and... county manager's review, uh, and, um, any alterations that we need in it, uh, as well as to name the county manager as the person identified within that contract, is, is to be the point of contact, uh, underneath this contract.
Hell with my motion.
So do we have to be worded?
If that was your motion, I didn't, I, I, I wasn't able to hear that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
And that's second is motion.
I had, had some question on, uh, I believe it was section 14, the arbitration clause.
14, I think is termination. Go ahead, what's your question, Stan?
But is the arbitration, it's, it mentioned a federal process. Where would that arbitration occur? I think it was 14-4.
It just says if they have selected arbitration and, and I, I don't remember right off, but my recollection is arbitration was not selected within this. It was, it was mediation, it was mutual agreement, it was mediation, and then it was to Vance County Courts. So I, I don't recall arbitration even being selected in this. That's just, I mean, this is a form contract. And so it, it, it says at the beginning of 14-4, if the parties have selected arbitration, and arbitration was not selected for this one.
Okay. Some of the earlier paragraphs of the document reference section 14-4.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, Dan.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion, I mean, Stan is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Did you have anything else, Dan?
I mean, my question hasn't been answered, but, you know.
What, what, what question? Arbitration is not part of it, so it won't be held anywhere.
Okay.
And so what other, what other, do you remember what it was referencing, uh, where else in the contract that you read 14-4?
It's in some of the initial pages. Contract's quite lengthy for me to sit here and.
I remember it referencing other sections about termination and, and the manner in which it's terminated, but if you come across it, just shoot me an email.
All right.
Um, next appointment, Doyle Compaugh, Vance Rescue Squad, Rescue Squad contract discussion.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate, I appreciate you giving us time to talk. Uh, I don't know where you want to start at or where you don't, but I'll go back to the last meeting to start with. Uh, it was brought up in the last meeting by rescue squads that Alaman's County Rescue Squad was being defunded this year. That's not correct statement. They're currently being funded as they always have. They run numerous rescues over the past 24 hours in Alaman's County. Uh, the county actually funds a $1.2 million rescue truck that was purchased for them in 20 and 21, along with their operating expense, and they, they pay their annual payment of $100,000 a year. Um, to go on to Edgecombe County Rescue Squad, yes, Edgecombe County did take Edgecombe County Rescue Squad over. Edgecombe County Rescue Squad's primary duty was EMS in Edgecombe County, which they run six advanced life support amelances 24 hours a day throughout that county. They assumed that responsibility because of the cost of paying EMS to a volunteer nonprofit organization. Um, it was brought up about Edgecombe County having a paid fire department. According to North Carolina State Fire Marshal, they do not currently have a paid fire department because Edgecombe County has not allocated a specific fire district for that paid fire department, according to the emergent management, Mr. Daniel Webb. Um, they currently run countywide, which is the same principle as what we're currently doing. We're doing it with volunteers in every district to assist with volunteers during the day with paid staff versus they have one department where the county funded $1.5 million to purchase three apparatuses, um, which they're currently going to try to run as soon as they get an allocated fire district in that, uh, industrial park, which nobody else would take on the responsibility of covering. So I just, I just wanted to clear that, uh, up there that, you know, rescue squads, they say is a dying breed, which it depends on who you ask and what you ask. In the state of North Carolina right now, there's over 40 rescue squads that are currently operating that do not perform EMS, that are strictly rescue squads throughout the state. I was in Surry County last week and said there's five rescue squads in Surry County alone that still function 100%. Um.
During the last meeting, you know, he said that the, uh, we could purchase rescue equipment for 140 to 160,000 dollars and provide everything that the Vance County Rescue Squad provides, and that's a, that's an inadequate statement. In 2006, we bought a heavy rescue truck sitting out there right now. It cost us $309,000. It didn't have nothing on it. That same truck, Alaman's County Rescue just bought in 2021 at 1.2 million. So there's no way that you can provide the same service that we provide for 160,000 dollars at one time cost. Speaking of one time cost, I don't have nothing that's one time expense. If I buy it, you got to maintain it. You've got to insure it, you've got to keep it up. Last year on a 50/50 matching grant, I spent $60,000 replacing rope equipment to satisfy the state's certification of, uh, high angle rescue. And the state paid the other 50% of that. This year, the North Carolina State Fire Marshal Office come out with a grant for volunteer rescue squads only to do building renovation. I applied for that grant and was awarded that grant. I spent $255,000 on the Vance County Rescue Squad. It only cost our organization $54,000. And that building was renovated from top to bottom, concrete, paint, HVAC systems, the whole nine yards. Um, as far as, we kept referring to water rescue, water rescue in the last meeting. Water's not the only thing we do. September 10th, 1953 is when our organization was formed and created, and it was formed and created because Car Lake was being built. Is the reason it was formed and created. Throughout the tenure of the rescue squad, our articles of cooperation have changed and got amended to provide rescue services throughout the county in other aspects. Um, currently, Car Lake is, uh, one of the largest revenue generators for tourism in our county. According to state data, North Carolina, 2023, Car Lake was set, uh, well, tourism in our county was $74 million brought in. With that being said, Car Lake was the highest of bringing that in. Um, and I got that information today. Just like the fireworks July 4th down here, over 2,000 people entered that park to see that fireworks show. Vance County Rescue Squad puts their boats in the water, go down there and puts the buoys out for the, uh, do not enter zones and this, that, and the other. And we have done that for as long as I can remember, 15 years I know. Um, and I'm not saying that volunteer fire departments can't provide a rescue service, but just in rescue services alone, there's 18 different disciplines of rescue. At the last meeting, it was talked about, there's over 50 people certified in the county to perform rescue. That could be 50, that could be 500 certified in some form of rescue. But what departments in the county are certified to provide that form of rescue is a whole different ballgame. And I say that because you have to have eight certified members in the same discipline to provide that service technically, to be certified by the North Carolina State Rescue Association. The North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal does not certify any department in any form of rescue. In their incorporation papers and everything else, it says, seek guidance from the North Carolina State Rescue Association, not the North Carolina State Fire Marshal Department. So with that being said, you know, it goes back, Vance County's got two rescue providers in it, Vance County Rescue, Watkins Community Volunteer Fire Department is heavy rescue certified. Nobody else in this county is certified to perform rescue on the water or on land either one, as far as that goes, according to the State Rescue Association.
Can you say that again?
Nobody in Vance County other than Watkins Community Volunteer Fire Department is certified in heavy rescue. And the Vance County Rescue Squad are certified in accounting to perform any form of rescue according to the North Carolina State Rescue Association. That does not include the City of Henderson. The City of Henderson Fire Department is in fact certified to perform rescue. Uh, at the same time, Warren County is a prime example, you know, we want to get outsiders to come in. Okay, that's fine. Nobody in Warren County has the first certification in water rescue period to the North Carolina State Rescue Association. And that includes water rescue, dive, swift water, or anything in between. I'm not saying that, that, like I said, that fire departments can't perform rescue, but if they can, they need to meet the same standard, the same element as the Vance County Rescue Squad says has to meet since 1953. At no time do I want to go away from providing our county citizens a excellent service, whether it be fire, rescue, EMS, it don't matter. But I can go buy a hammer and nails, that don't mean I'm a general contractor, I can't go build a house. You can buy all the rescue equipment you want to, but until you meet the requirements, where's the ball stop? That's all I, you know.
So how long do it take to get the requirements?
The requirements alone, depending on which discipline that you, uh, you choose to go with, um. Get you the actual. For TR ropes alone, that's 111 hours. But before you can take that, you got to have one or two things. Pre-weather class in fire, which is 428 hours, or you've got to have TR, intro to TR, which is 45 hours. So you've got to have one of them before you can take them. Uh, common passenger vehicles, 42 hours, heavy rescue's 36, surface water's 36, swift water, 36. Wheellifts is 48 hours. That's a total of one band of 309 hours. And you've got to have eight people certified and each one of them to accomplish that certification.
And you all have all that rescue?
We are certified in confined, I mean, uh, high angle, water rescue and heavy rescue, yes ma'am.
So you got eight or more?
Yes, ma'am. And not only that, you talk about volunteers, it's slender than none, we don't do this, we don't do that. Well, number one, if we come to a scene, you ask us to do something, we don't do it, you need to call me and let me know because our people are here to work together, 100% of the problem, number one. But number two, I don't know that, uh, there's anything that, over 50% of my people are fire certified. They can fight fire when they get to a scene. The difference is, we focus more on rescue than we do fire. Our equipment focuses more on rescue than it does fire. In, in the last meeting that I, that I listened to on the YouTube, it said something about duplication of services. Uh, there's nobody servicing here I'm duplicating. We were the first emergency service provider in Vance County to provide rescue, the first one. So anybody that's providing that service now is duplicating my service, not Delaware Rainbow.
So why do you think we had two fire studies? I'm just, you know, trying to think of a question people want to know. Why do you think, um, two, we had two fire study and they suggest that we become one entity? Why do you think they feel like the fire department and you need to be one?
I don't know, but out of 100 counties in the state, there ain't 10 paid county-run fire departments in the entire state. But there's a lot of rescue squads still going.
Matt, Chair, can I ask you a couple of questions? First question I got, can you go to any event as far as water or vehicle or anyone by yourself?
Me first.
I'm talking about your organization.
Yes, sir.
You have to be with someone that's qualified to be there, that is the fire chiefs or a full-time county fire.
Yes, sir.
Name me one event you've been to by yourself.
What are you talking about?
Your organization, name me one event that you've been to by yourself.
We were, we were on the, uh, Car Lake all weekend by ourselves.
Who was there with you?
The rescue squad.
And who else?
Nobody.
I, I don't, was Wake Forest down there?
No, sir. Sure were not.
Well, let me ask you this, was that an event?
Yes, sir. It's a big event every year. It generates.
Was any emergency called?
On the lake? No, sir.
That's my point. Any emergency that is, you go to Vance County, you have to be called. You can't go by yourself and handle it.
We were requested to come down there by.
Now, let me go, let me go, we'll, we'll stop there. I don't want to sit here and argue about it.
I'm not arguing, Mr. Heston, but what I'm saying is.
Let me ask you this, how much are we spending per month with Vance County Rescue?
Per month?
Per month?
The county gives us $130,000 a year to operate.
And what else?
Fire tax, our citizens.
And payroll.
Our fire tax pays for our payroll.
It's still taxpayers' money.
But what I'm saying is, the citizens.
It's running us around $25,000 a month.
How much money does the fire department cost?
They're, they're there full time, and I can get them to do this and it costs me nothing.
They can't.
Second, second question there is, what do they do in Warren County? What do they do in Granville County? What do they do in Franklin County?
Okay, so in Warren County, they have three different departments that got a rescue certification.
Well.
They respond to all over the county.
Well, you know what the cost is? Silver.
No, that's not true.
And Person County, what's the cost in Person County?
Person County what?
The advanced, uh, Person County Rescue Squad, how much?
I don't know how much the county's paying.
219.
How much?
219, 2, 200, 219,000 per year. What do we pay?
What do we pay? 130,000 to operate.
No, no, I'm talking about 219 includes their salary too. So how much are we paying?
I, I, I don't know what you're asking.
$300,000.
Okay, $300,000.
And so it's costing us for the last, costing us for the last year, three-year contract we have with you, it's cost us an average of $300,000 a year, almost a million dollars.
And the county fire department provides service to our community, I mean, our community.
Right.
Which is very few and far between across the entire state. Over the past three years, it's cost us over $5 million.
Well, I know where $3 million of my money went, taxpayer from Vance County.
I'm just saying, every volunteer fire department in this county provides the same service.
No, nobody around us has the cost that we have, nobody.
Exactly, because no other county around us has one paid fire department that's costing us over 1.6 million dollars a year either.
That's the reason we can, need to consolidate.
Well, consolidating is fine, but one thing.
No, you just answered my question.
Listen to what I'm fixing to tell you. We can consolidate, but Vance County Rescue Squad.
I would.
We are our own incorporation and we are our own entity.
I would, I would think that you just answered my question and I'm sitting here going over and over, and the fire study said, we need to consolidate.
Well, before you say the fire study says, which part of the fire study did you read?
The fire study said we need to consolidate.
I, I, I'm not going to say the fire study says it because in one, one paper that I have that come from Mr. Rene Perry, it says that we need a technical rescue team.
Well, you know, there's two questions. Now, I'm more concerned with taxpayers' money being spent wisely in North Carolina and wisely in this county.
Well, it's not being spent wisely when we spend 1.8 million dollars on one department and the rest of the volunteer departments in this county.
I know how, I, I, I know how to end up getting this cut down. And as long as we stay in the direction we're going, we're not going to cut it down.
Well, if you go in any other direction until you can provide the same services that we're currently providing, you're going backwards.
I'm, I, I, we can.
I'm not going to argue with you. The, the proof is at the North Carolina State Rescue Association, it's not with me, it's not with these people.
Well, you know, that's.
Nobody else in the county is certified to perform the duties that we perform, and that's it.
I, I, you and I just totally disagree.
We can disagree, we're grown, we agree to disagree and move forward.
Yes, sir.
We provide the best service for our citizens, doing away with a department that has the certification to do it and giving to somebody who don't is totally irrelevant, in my book.
We disagree?
That's fine.
Get on all this screen, just so you know.
The, the proof is there, you just got to look for it. I'm not going off what somebody tells me, I'm going off the numbers, the facts, the figures, the statistics across the entire state, not off a personal agenda of what people have. Period.
Mr. Heston, you're an elected official, you need to remember that. I'm part of the Republican Party, you have been in the three years that you need to be asked.
Carolyn.
Doyle, in my listening to you talk and everything, my thing is in terms of the people that you talk about being trained in terms of staff, how, when you're shift and everything, when are you there and when are you not there in terms of staff and the people that are, the people that are providing the service? How does that run?
Same way it runs the volunteer department, just together, we have two paid people to work a minimum.
You have, we, when we blow out the money, so you have the two people there for the.
Chairman assigned that when it went through.
So they're there for what, 12 hours?
Yes, sir.
And then the rest of it is volunteer?
Yes, sir. Just like every other volunteer, you're a public, you're not a county.
Just like the volunteer department, okay.
Yes, sir.
Hold on. Let's, let's take a, let's take the incident that occurred out in, um, Townsville a couple of weeks ago. Missing, missing person. Um, how long was the rescue squad on that call?
A day and a half.
Do we currently have the staffing with, with our paid department to handle that?
I mean, they, they, they can always come assist, but who covers the district?
That, that's, that's it. I mean, if, if, so if we've got firefighting and then we have rescue, but we've got limited staff, where do you, where do you do that?
I don't know. Out of, out of that, uh, thing down there, it, it searched, there was seventy people on the ground search that day. And out of all the fire departments and everything that was there, there was four paid firemen there. The rest of them were volunteer or sheriff's office, law enforcement, wildlife, Virginia, you know.
Okay. I just.
It, it's not only about water rescue, cutting somebody a call. There's, there's not another agency in the county that has a side-by-side that is capable of hauling a patient out of the woods on a spineboard.
I'm saying we're, we're buying one now, um, to duplicate your services, but.
Once again, I'm not the one duplicating. We don't have, uh, uh, million-dollar trucks in the building with truck payment on it. Everything we have has already been bought, paid for, purchased and it's paid for. And we currently keep it up and operating.
I, I think, you know, the fire study, I, I keep hearing this, fire study says this and fire study says it's that. The start, fire study says two different things. Um, one thing it does say is that, that, that could be a combination department. And they, and you need to work together. But in that study, it takes people to, to do that. And I don't believe that what the direction we're heading now is consistent with what the fire study said. And, and I've studied it and I studied the one we did in two thousand and six and I studied the one we just did. And the one we just did contradicts itself in two or three occasions. And so we need to, to, to take this back to the committee that's been looking at this for a number of years and have some more in-depth conversation about that. And that's, that's where I feel, we're not going to resolve this tonight. We can talk tonight until midnight and, and we're not going to get any resolution tonight, but we do need to have some more conversation about working and stop spending double money. Uh, citizens', taxpayers' money, duplicating things that we already have that we could be working together on. And that's what we've got.
I, I just want to say, you know, when it says Wake Forest Fire Department, that, 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 that call actually came up y'all last night. Now, they had to be called to do this and do that. First and foremost, nobody that was in charge of anything down there called them. A part-time fireman that was working for the fire department that did also works in Wake Forest Fire Department made that phone call from his cell phone. It's nowhere in emergency management documentation of their report that they were requested to come down there. The original call come out as a missing person, not a drowning. It won't till you get down there to see what was going on before you knew what to do from that point. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that and the documentation's in the now-on-one K report that shows it.
Joel, just in your summary, just tell me, what, what is the pros and cons of being a unity, coming together as a combined? Or how do you see that? Is it a good thing or not in your summary?
Well, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And, and people say it's costing money, but they don't know the whole cost. If they analyze the entire picture, I tell you what's happening. And, and somebody told me this the other day and it made perfect, made perfect good sense. They're losing the vision for the site right in front of them. They're not looking at the whole, whole picture. It makes perfect good sense when that was explained, the way it was.
Yeah, we talked about the county station acquiring equipment. County station serves one district. So if you guys were to go away, that would mean that each of the fire departments would then have to become rescue certified.
To provide the same adequate service.
Provide the same adequate service that you're providing. And their cost would be, um, you know, we said a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that gets you a boat and a, uh, remote control drone or whatever.
That drone is useless without sonar to go with it. And then on top of that, I can go buy everything you want to buy, but if you ain't got the experience to run it, you know, it's, it's useless.
But that, and, and that, that only gets you in one discipline. And so you're talking about several hundred thousand dollars to equip these departments with that. And, and that again, would be taxpayer dollars. So these numbers that they've been throwing out are not numbers pertinent to the whole county. Those are numbers that are pertinent only to one department making that transition. We've got to do something different to, to figure this out.
There's actually four departments on, just on the lake alone. Are we going to buy all four of them departments, the same rescue equipment, the same rescue boats, the same sonars, the same ropes? And train all of them the same way that we're training, that have been providing that service since the lake's been there?
And then you've got to have eight individuals in each discipline in order to be rescue certified.
Yes, sir.
And if, if you don't have rescue certification and you go out and attempt to do a rescue, what is your liability?
Liability falls on them and the county then, because you got rid of a certified organization.
Okay.
But Joel, as I listen to you talk and everything, I'm going to try to put those places. You're one entity right now. So based on what the chairman said, if we look at combining that with the Vance County Fire Department, it still becomes one entity and everything.
It does, but you have the first.
When you bring the talents and the expertise to one area, you still wind up doing the same thing, right? That's what you're doing. You bring, you got one entity, you one entity right now. The Vance County Fire Department is one entity. If you look at the skills and skill sets of the people that are involved in your organization and the skill sets of people involved in our organization, you bring it together, you have a much more powerful organization.
But they, they don't have volunteers in that organization.
But at the same time, then we, I think you look at it in terms of the skill sets that come, because you only got, you only, you one entity, you only got two people working, so, you know.
And the county don't have any more than that.
But you still, you go to, you run to, you run to everything that's out there. You run yourself raggedy.
Well, I mean, they, they, they have run themselves ragged as well.
You look at the skill set that people have and you combine them, then you have a much more effective system.
You know, and, and.
That's the bottom line.
It is. As long as you've got the adequate staff and we, we probably do not have.
Yeah. But you look at combining, you wind up, you wind up staffing it with adequate staff. You wind up doing it.
You can't do it without current staff and the numbers are there and the reports that the commissioners get every month. I mean, when you got, you've got to meet your fire flow in, in that one district, you've got to take your three engines to your call in your primary district. You ain't got the five people working just waiting there. And then we're going to worry about rescue.
Mr. Kelly, if you'll look on page, uh, sixty-three of our packet, uh, you can see the number of staff that are on, on, on staff with us. The numbers vary from three to six. So you're going to take two boats and two fire trucks to a scene and stay there for whatever period of time it takes and keep your district covered. It just doesn't make sense.
What I want, what I don't understand is, Dan, these other counties are not doing that. Granville County is not doing that. Warren County is not doing that. Franklin County is not doing that. And all these other counties are, are doing it, are doing it cheaper than we're doing it here, a lot cheaper. We're the most expensive county in the five county district. And, and, and you're doubled, you're double booking. I don't care what you do, but you're double booking and what you're trying to do has been eliminated in most of the other counties in this state because of double booking.
The, um.
You need to consolidate it and put it under, in our county. I, I have never understood why we, as a county, we be yet paying the payroll of a private organization.
You do it for every volunteer fire department. What is the difference?
That is a private fi- department. That's, that's a private organization. But it, it, it has a territory that is obligated for them. You don't have any territory.
The entire county.
No, you don't. You can't go anywhere. You cannot go anywhere in this county without having the, the fire chief from any of this county or the fire chief from the volunteer. You can't do it.
But my contract says I run the entire county.
I, I have not seen that and you can't do it.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Any more questions? All right. Thank you. You got a coat?
Well, what I'd like us to do is to move this back to the committee that's been dealing with this and have a committee meeting on that.
I, I thought we had decided on this thing, was going to look at it for ninety days and make a decision whether they went forward or what we did with it. That was our deal, not in, not backing them committee.
So, and I just want to speak on that because at, that meeting, um, I got consensus and it's in, it's in our minutes for us to move forward with purchasing equipment and apparatus. And so Chief Harrison is going to discuss that. We, we have moved forward with, um, capital purchase in order to become rescue certified and get everything that we need. And that came out of the last meeting, it's in the minutes, so just FYI.
I think based on our conversation, we're going to take that to committee?
We can look, we can take it to committee.
Okay, thank you.
It's a work.
He, he want to take it to the public safety committee to look at it one final time. Um, we, we, we still, like I said, we, most of the time we bring our committee meetings to the, our work session, but, um, and we said we needed to go out to committees, we could, so we're going to take it to a committee.
Will they come back?
We got three months. We got three months to look at everything.
Before we as a, as a board decide, we got three months.
You got three months and everything come back to the board.
And come back to the board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, um, next appointment, fire department battalion chief Brian Wims, rescue equipment update. And, um, Adam Pender and Michael Lejeune.
Yeah, actually Chief Harrison is, is going to do the presentation, Miss Ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First I might say thank you for having me, having my guys here.
Pull your mic up some.
Can you speak up? Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Just pull it up some, you're tall, okay.
Right here.
Is the mic on?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, first you guys have, uh, detailed this, the items that we have researched in order to. And I want to make a statement that the purchases and the equipment that we were trying to acquire will be of usage of all Vance County departments we need. I think it's stronger or it will make our services a little bit stronger when y'all have access, y'all get the same training to deal with.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
It's never good when one entity has everything. It's never good. Everybody, all departments should be self-sufficient in every way. Is it, when, when you limit that, like what has been done in past, past years, you are hindering the progression of the fire service or public safety in the area. For example, the rescue, yes, they have plenty of high-angle equipment. But if you had those same services or equipment being purchased across the county, imagine how much stronger it would be. Instead of just saying that the rescue has X, Y, Z, that's not fair to the citizens across Vance County at all. We all should be strong and have the same equipment possible when possible. That's what it's all about. That's what making service delivery better in Vance County is all about. And I, I'll just get into some of the issues or some of the equipment that we have acquired about. I'll read a little bit. The Vance County Fire Department is proud to announce a series of transformative initiatives and strategic equipment acquisitions designed to significantly enhance emergency response capabilities and foster stronger regional collaboration across Vance County and surrounding areas. As part of our commitment to unified and effective emergency services, the department is finalizing, uh, MOU memorandum of understanding with neighboring fire and rescue agencies. This agreement will enable, um, seamless integration of personnel and resources across jurisdictions, ultimately leading to faster, more coordinated responses during critical incidents such as missing person searches, dive operations and technical rescues. Um, and you got, I think someone said earlier about a gentleman making a phone call to have Wake Forest respond. Well, I'm familiar with that because I was standing there. I know exactly who that employee is because he was with me. And he asked me about it. He got my permission to go ahead and start the memorandum. That's what I know now. So, so when you provide misinformation, that, that's never good if you weren't there. So what I am saying is that I was there and I made that call for him to have Wake Forest go ahead and respond ahead of time. And they responded and it was there on the water drone that found the child. Uh, we are there to work as a team. I'm not here to, to say what I did or what they didn't do. That's never a good thing. That doesn't get anybody anywhere. We are supposed to be a team. But everybody's not playing that way. Um, if I was to continue on, um, we have required about two rescue units. One, uh, with the capabilities of having dive, you can dive off of it, it will have emergency lights. Um, it will have a fire pump as well and has some just moves capabilities that will absolutely increase our service delivery to the area. And the other one is an inflatable four-seventy Zodiac type of, which will be used in these occasions when, for example, if another county calls during flooding, we would definitely be able to go out and help, um, save lives and protect property. Um, now this will be a, a strenuous process of training. It will be. But we are up to the challenge, no question about it. And we will get there. Advanced County as a whole will be stronger than ever.
I know you're just getting here, but why did it, why hasn't it happened before now to be? As you said, it was, it's bad for one entity, one place to, to provide, provide service. So what, um, why don't we have the other, they have the equipment to, the other departments to have the equipments to, um, do the rescue?
Well, I think.
Just for you, like I said, I know you're just getting here, so what do you think?
Well, just from my observations and what I've heard, um, through several conversations, basically, um, for, through personal agendas, everybody else has been hindered from making purchases that could allow them to pool or to provide the same services as rescue squad. See, if you get the same equipment that they do, they will become obsolete because that's what everybody is going to around the world. The rescue squads all will become obsolete. Because if we had the same equipment, what's the point of them being there?
But I guess I'm asking why has, they only, they have that equipment that they need. They already have it.
Yes.
Why doesn't the other volun- the departments have it to, by now, to say that we, that we, we shouldn't just had one is what you stated. It should have been. So I'm just asking what took, so why haven't you think happened? It hadn't happened?
That's a question that you probably have to discuss with, um, other people that have been here for years.
Okay, because it just, it hit my mind, so for us to go into this now to.
Yes.
Because you said it's going to be a strenuous thing to get these people trained.
Yes.
And to, we got to purchase.
In my, I'm sorry. In my opinion, this is something that should have been used.
Okay. It just.
I can't tell exactly why, uh, people or departments were held from making purchases that were similar to theirs. I can't explain.
And getting the training that they needed before.
But it's very similar across the state. When you want a stronger team, you get more people do the same thing. And it's not about, it's not about one entity. It's about everybody becoming stronger as one. And that hasn't happened in Vance County and that's what we're looking to do.
Uh, Chair, one thing I can say, you've got a great question. And really, let me say this. I've had the opportunity to sit down with this chief and communicate. And I think part of the reason that we're doing this is because you've got somebody here that has had the experience and knowledge from outside of Vance County to move this Vance County forward. And he, he's had been involved with this in other counties. And I'm telling you, he wants to move, he's dedicated, he wants to move this county forward and he wants to do it at a cost factor savings for this community. And that's, that's what I have called, and that's what, what's moved forward.
And so just one thing, I may or may not get in trouble for this. Um, since I started in this position, November of twenty twenty-three, I've noticed that the Vance County Fire Department has been held down and not able to move forward with certain things. And having a chief here, like Commissioner Hester says, that has experience outside of Vance County, we're ready to move forward at this point. When you think about the capital budgets in the fire department being frozen for years and not being able to purchase certain things, I think every, I think where we are now is a result of just being held down and not being able to move forward in previous years. And that's just my assessment.
Madam Chair, one more thing I would add. I've had the opportunity to go speak to volunteer fire departments and I, I've, I didn't come to this conclusion of where we are now lightly. I have been constantly thinking about it. But I want to save the taxpayers of this community money and it, and we can do that. But the thing about it is I wouldn't talk to volunteer fire departments. And they are so pleased to have this gentleman here in Vance County now trying to move this county forward. And now they have told me that personally. So I just wanted to add that.
Chairman, my name is Battalion Chief Williams, Vance County Fire Department. I've been employed with Vance County Fire Department this August twenty-two years. And I can answer your question. Administration in the past, our former county, uh, county manager, I have sat in a couple of conversations between, uh, former Fire Chief Chris Wright and our former county manager, where he has approached him asking for certain, uh, pieces of equipment for rescue. And we were always told we have the Vance County Rescue Squad for that. And we were not allowed to pursue purchases of those pieces of equipment. We were always shot down when we, uh, when we wrote something about that.
Thank you. We go ahead and continue.
Okay. Those boats will be utilized for water rescue, fire suppression, uh, waterways, evidence recovery and victim retrieval. And it, just to explain the victim retrieval, um, and how that operates. We want to purchase equipment that will be safe for, I know that a person, you know, when they drown and they are deceased, um, I know it's a, a deceased body. But it's still a body. It's still a human body. We want to provide the efforts that are, or, or the equipment that is safe to dive and rescue or bring those victims up in a safe manner. Uh, we don't want to use fish hooks or anything that can rip into a deceased body and bring them up. Um, and to me, a human body shouldn't be treated that way at all. So we want to find new, newer ways, new innovative ways to make that happen as well when we retrieve bodies. Moving on, we have a possible UTV that will be able to provide search and rescue mi- um, missions, off-road fire suppression and, um, be able to utilize at public events. Um, uh, public events is very important for us to be seen, for us to be out and about and for us to provide those same services to the community if something were to happen. Moving on to, we have, um, this is a possibility, um, having Engine Three transition into Squad Three type. Um, now designated as the department's primary technical rescue apparatus, Engine Three offers expanded compartment space to carry specialized equipment. It will operate in conjunction with our newly developed TR, Technical Rescue Team and Utility Trailer. Final equipment delivery is expected by the end of July with locally sourced items and the TR trailer ready for rapid acquisition. Vance County Fire is actively transitioning toward medium to heavy rescue capabilities with the goal of becoming a fully certified heavy rescue agency in the future. Evolution is being achieved through targeted investments in rescue and support equipment, comprehensive ongoing training for personnel, strengthened partnerships with regional emergency services.
Going back to Engine Three, will that maintain its water carrying capacity?
Yes.
And its firefighting capacity as far as everything?
Yes.
Okay.
So how long will this training take?
It, it just depends on when it's a, available, um, at the college. Uh, we have worked with, um, Mr. Barney, who works at Vance Grandview. And he, he's aware of what we want to do.
So if he said you could come tomorrow, how many weeks, months do it take to be trained to do this, you know? Is this, you don't know?
It could take a couple of months. It can. Um, but we have people certified in different areas on different aspects. So they may be missing a few classes here and there for them to be certified. But it is possible.
How long will it take you to become rescue certified?
Sir?
How long will it take you to become rescue certified?
It could definitely be, it, it can be, take a couple of months.
Couple of months?
Yes.
Okay.
Less than sixty, sixty days?
Sixty days, I would say sixty days.
Okay.
I thought I just heard in the previous presentation that it was three hundred and some hours of training.
For which ones? Is, is several classes?
For the disciplines, for the disciplines that the rescue squad currently has.
If you already have certain classes, then it won't be that long.
Okay.
If you already have majority of that training for that ti- particular block, then it won't take you that long.
So you've got six people, if everybody's at work. You've got to have eight people that are certified in an area in order to qualify for that discipline. Is that correct?
That may be correct.
Okay. So how do you turn six people into eight people? When you don't have any volunteer staff?
Now, I'm just saying what you're saying.
Exactly. You don't do it. You've only got.
So you're saying we don't have any, any certified in this, in the county? Is that what you're saying? Nobody in the county other than Vance County Fire Certified?
He's, he's got, if, if everybody's at work.
Sure.
Reports indicate it's anywhere from three to six.
Sure.
So he doesn't have the number of staff to actually hold those disciplines.
If you have other volunteer firefighters in the county to have them, then I'd be eight.
So.
Kind of have a combination department.
Potentially.
Full paid department.
But you, but we, we don't do anything single-handedly around in Vance County.
I, I'm talking about certifications.
We don't do anything in Vance County, single-handedly.
So it's in combination with the other departments, right? Is that what you're saying? Right?
It'll be a combination of departments.
So you've got to create a combination department in order to do that?
No, he's saying volunteer agencies.
With volunteer departments.
Right.
Across Vance County to make anything happen.
I, I believe, don't you have to have a roster?
It has to be eight within the, um, county from my understanding. And I believe we have that eight or close to it throughout the county with the volunteer agencies as well. Right? So it's not necessarily on Vance County Fire Department's roster. It could be a combination with the, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, okay. I, I, I just, we'll leave that alone because obviously we've, we've got some differences in what I've been reading and what you're telling us.
Well, well, we can definitely discuss whatever you have been reading.
And we can, um, discuss it at the Public Safety Committee meeting as well when we schedule it.
We definitely.
Can I ask another question? Chief, can I ask you a que- can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Um, if it's anybody you don't have qualified within a certain range anywhere for any project or anything we have an emergency for, and do you have contacts to have that field with other places?
Yes, immediately.
Thank you.
So what you're saying?
It's my understanding that one time, when we presented with, a couple of years ago with a list of the people that were in the Vance County Fire Department that had the training to do E, uh, emergency rescue and everything, that a lot of them had the necessary, had the, had the training. And what you're saying is that, what you're saying is that when you look at the people, no one, there may be shorter periods of time, let, the time to become completely certified, maybe few hours, may not, not be a whole lot of hours, right?
It depends on what certifications you already have.
That why?
It depends on what certifications you already have and what classes in that tier you have already taken.
So you would look at the people in your department, look at what they have and see what they need to become certified, right?
Yes.
So, you know, it, it may not be the same for everybody, right?
That's right.
Correct.
I'm gonna take the, um, Colonel Taylor approach. I'm gonna do a simple term from what Commissioner Hester said. So what you're saying, for instance, for example, if we ended the contract with the rescue in three months, at the end of the three months, you will be up and ready to move and rescue?
We will be.
Who, um, you, Mr. Hester just said, made us comment about you had other organizations that could assist you?
Yes.
Who are those organizations?
You can have Roanoke Wildwood.
Is, um, is Roanoke Wildwood certified in rescue?
I have no idea.
They're not.
Not, not as of right now.
They're not. Just Roanoke Wildwood. Huh?
Roanoke Wildwood certified, sir.
Are they state certified? Okay, all right, so.
And we have wait for us.
Does Roanoke, is Roanoke Wildwood state certified? The answer is no.
We have wait for us.
Okay. And does Roanoke Wildwood have eight divers who are rescue certified? I believe they have four. Ten.
Ten.
That are rescue certified?
Ten.
That are rescue certified? I'm sorry?
Is it public safety, Brian?
Public safety certified.
Public safety certified, okay. All right.
Chief Harrison, can you go, go ahead? I was gonna tell him just, can you go ahead and continue your presentation? And can we just save all this for the Public Safety Committee? Because it'll, we'll be here all night.
Yeah, we're gonna save it for the Public Safety. But you go ahead and finish right quick. Go ahead and sum it up.
Building specialized response teams. We are proud to announce the formation or the possible formation of several specialized response teams, um, in Vance County. Dive team, TR team, technical, technical rescue team, fire investigation team, drone operations team, and a surface water rescue team, um, pending on the MOUs. We have also, also, um, implemented to increase situational awareness and operational effectiveness, the department is attempting to acquire an aerial drone and a underwater drone. The Vance County Fire Department remains steadfast in its mission to protect and serve our community through innovation, collaboration and operational excellence. We recognize that success is a shared responsibility and together with our regional partners, we are building a stronger, safer and more resilient Vance County.
That's it? You just?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
No problem.
We're gonna open the Water District Board, run the report, operation report.
Any commissioners have any questions about the monthly operations report?
Is there anyone here from the water, from, um?
EnviroLink, I don't think so. Is it? Were they able to make it? Okay, he's here.
Yeah, I, I have some questions based on this last event.
Can you come up for us, please? How are you?
Hey, everyone. John Greer with EnviroLink.
John Greer, thank you. Um, we had an event last week where in the Kitchell area, we lost water pressure. And it was lost to the point that some people didn't have water. I got two or three calls on that. Yet it's my understanding that there was not a pool of water advisory done in that. Can you explain why that wasn't necessary?
Yeah, because the pressure was lost at the tank, not at the pipe. When the tank doesn't have enough pressure to push water to people's homes, there's still water in the pipe, but not enough pressure to move it out. So the tank lost pressure due to the lightning strike. Uh, that's, that's not our equipment. That's your engineer's equipment.
I understand that.
So I can't answer any questions about that. But as far as the NOV goes, um, there was not pressure in the pipes that were lost. It was pressure at the tank pushing the pressure in the pipes.
It's mine. Did you have enough pressure to maintain fire flow?
Fire flow is not part of the drinking water from our standpoint as far as NOVs are concerned.
But isn't that part of the, the state regulation as far as when, that you've got, if you go below twenty pounds, you have to?
Twenty pounds of PSI tapped through the home.
Okay, and there were homes that didn't have water coming out of it, is my understanding.
So, so again, the pressure in the pipe, according to our technicians, is over twenty pounds? Uh, and I'm sorry, I think I just misspoke. I, I've misunderstood your question. And then let me correct what I just said. So what you're saying, what I believe you were saying is, uh, the reason that it should have been NOV is because some homes didn't have water pressure.
Right.
Our understanding of that regulation and, um, again, dealing with our technicians, is as long as there's pressure in the pipe, there's no time for bacteria to grow, which is why you issue an NOV because a pipe has air in it on your main lines and allows bacteria to grow. That situation did not happen. We were alerted that there was dropping pressure and immediately started pumping the tank at one fifty-eight PM. I know because I'm the one who turned it on. Um, and, uh, we were able to regain pressure in the tank fairly quickly. And we did not see any indications of pressure loss in the line that would cause an NOV to be sent out to all customers saying they had to boil water because there was no, uh, time or air contact for growth.
Okay. All right, the, so the fact that I had a few calls telling me they didn't have any water would indicate there wasn't adequate pressure?
At their home.
At their home.
Yes, and, and, and we don't treat water.
And, and if you don't have it at your home, you probably don't have it in the, the pipe in the street either.
Maybe, maybe. I, I didn't measure it in front of every house, so I can't tell you that there was no pipe that didn't have pressure.
Okay.
Again, the technicians we had on site did not recognize any loss of pressure in the main lines.
Okay. Now, I understand that, that, that pipe was, uh, that water was turned off. The tank was overflowing on probably was it Saturday night or something? And you had somebody come down and turn that off? And then I understand the transponder was hit by lightning?
Frankie would be.
That would be, that's, I understand, that's part of our SCADA system.
Correct.
Okay. And, but no one came back to check. The employee who, who turned that off did not come back and check it until pressure dropped. Is that correct? And you came back and turned it back on?
That, yeah, that's correct. That's correct. Because at the time, we did not know that the SCADA was down. So they were monitoring the tanks remotely, which they, they do. That's more efficient. It doesn't cost the county as much. Uh, but because the SCADA was down, it was causing those readings to be bad. And it wasn't until we figured out that the lightning had hit the tank that we realized that there was a bigger issue.
Okay, all right. You've got, um, three cones in the middle of the road on Shavish Road where the pavement is about this much. It looks like you put some summer patch in it or something. When would that be repaired?
Is that one of ours or is that? Uh, I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been that way for several. And I've gotten a couple of calls saying that people almost had accidents because trying to go around the cone and cars coming. And I just, is there a, is there a protocol with DOT that you notify them or anything of any of that?
It, it depends on the road. If it's, of course, a state road, we, we may have to notify DOT. But typically that's handled through the county. There's a DOT notification or handled us in conjunction with the county. But, um, let me check on that and get back to you because I don't have an answer for it.
Okay. I just, we've got some concerns about the, the quality of service for EnviroLink right now. And I, I just, just put that out there.
Thank you, Ben. And we, we take those seriously and want to correct those.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Close the Water District Board, Finance Director Report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I want to share with you, uh, the amount that we have spent in the detention center in house repairs.
Is that mic working? I don't think it's working.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
No, it's not working. It's not working.
Yeah, it's turned down. I can hear it through it.
So I'm, I'll, can you hear me now? I'll share what we have spent for detention center in-house repairs. And this is as of June twenty, June thirty of twenty twenty-five. But there are invoices coming in. Franklin already showed them to me, but we just haven't paid them yet, but we will. Uh, so we have dispersed a hundred and twenty-one thousand fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents to vendors on the repairs at the existing detention facility. As far as what we have paid surrounding counties for housing our inmates, we have dispersed as of June thirty of twenty twenty-five, two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. And of course, some of those are still coming in as well.
What do we project that cost to be? I mean, I know we approved an amount in the budget. I can't remember what it was.
We, we did. We just planned to do budget amendments. Um, we didn't do a, a huge projection because we really didn't know how long it was gonna take for the repairs or how many inmates we're going to be able to house outside.
I thought we ran some numbers on that.
I think we ran a number like the, uh, the extra. I think we ran a number like the uh, the extra funds that we were gonna pay these uh, pay the staffing. So but not necessarily.
Yeah, because I know we're averaging about seventy-five thousand a month right now, but um, we won't really know until we decide how many um dorms that we're going to repair. So it's kind of hard to say how much we're gonna spend. But um, most of the inmates have been housed, um, so I think we were at one sixty, one seventy, and we've averaged between forty and fifty, is that right Sheriff? About fifty inmates in the facility, fifty? Yeah, less than fifty, right, yeah, so um, we really won't know a number until we know how many um dorms we're actually going to repair. In the meantime, because I still feel like we'll house inmates just until we're, the new facility is built.
So that's part of the cost analysis that we've done.
Yes.
So the public school build and repair renovation fund application. So a joint application filed by the county commissioners and the board of education must be submitted to the state in order to draw down available North Carolina Education Lottery Funds from the Public School Building Capital Fund. So the school facilities are in need of repairs and renovations to the existing facilities such as interior painting and roof replacement. So the board of education approved four application at this June twenty seven, uh, twenty twenty five meeting totally one uh, one million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Right, Sheriff.
We've got a recommendation.
Yeah, four, four applications. So uh, the recommendation, and before I say the recommendation, myself and John and also the manager's director met with uh, had a meeting with Zoom meeting with D P I and went over the amount of funding that's available, so we do have funding that's available. I think in the lottery, I think uh, as of June, the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty five in the lottery funding, there's unallocated balance of two point four million and then for repair and renovation lottery fund, that's one point nine million. So we do have those funds available that won't interfere with the um, debt service.
Kind of chow move that we approved the application to draw down lottery funds to use for repairs and renovations to the school facilities in the amount of one million, six hundred and ten thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, I got.
A motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And then we have uh Frank, Franklin Vance Warren opportunity have um, I think in the past years in our budget ordinance, we had allotted twelve thousand dollars to them. But in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, they did not receive those, those funds. So they have made a request for those funds, I'm bringing that before you for de- uh, decision, let, let me know what to do.
Okay, so that is twenty-four thousand dollars they were questioning, right? Um, still have to put it in a motion.
Yeah, I, let me clarify, is that funds we've already set aside?
Yes.
Yeah.
Make a motion when approved, second.
Got a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Now, um, Assistant County Manager's report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, this is the extension of the emergency pay policy on April fourteenth of this year. County Manager Perry presented a proposed emergency pay policy aimed at addressing critical staffing shortages within the county's detention services. The policy will be implemented for an initial period of eight weeks and was designed to provide enhanced compensation for current eligible detention staff and deputy sheriffs. In this eight-week period, we have spent approximately ninety-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars total, total in emergency pay. To continue addressing staffing shortages, we are requesting a ninety-day extension, after which county administration will evaluate critical staffing areas throughout the period to determine whether further extension is necessary. The recommendation is to approve the ninety-day extension for the emergency pay policy.
What, what did we originally approve, the amount we approved for that?
It was never an amount, it was just eight weeks.
Yeah.
Because we didn't know how many deputies that they would actually need.
I thought we had some estimate of cost.
Yeah, and I think we did lap salary, so we didn't have to um, request any additional funding.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes, eyes have it. Okay. Now, we'll have our county managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, um, the first item on my report is the USDA engagement. So the board's approval is required to engage with um USDA to begin the application process for loan financing to support the construction of the new detention center for Vance County. The USDA Rural Development Loan Program offers a viable financing option with competitive interest rates and flexible terms specifically designed to support rural communities with essential infrastructure projects like ours. So I'm requesting the board's approval to number one, authorize staff to formally engage with the USDA to initiate the loan application process for the new detention center project. Number two, to allow staff to gather the required documentation, assessments, and preliminary planning materials needed for submission. And number three, permit staff to bring back any related agreements, resolutions, or additional approvals for board review as the process moves forward. And so the recommendation is just to approve moving forward with the USDA application process, which does not commit the county to any financial, any final financial obligation at this stage. It will however position us to be better prepared to secure favorable finance in terms once final project planning is complete and approved.
Is that in a motion?
I want a motion.
Yes.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay. Second item is um, a reimbursement resolution, so I'm requesting board approval of a resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse itself for certain expenditures related to the detention center repairs and new construction project. In accordance with section one point one five oh dash two of the Treasury Regulations, this de- this declaration is required in order for the county to use future bond or note proceeds to reimburse project costs that have been or will be paid. The resolution allows the county to proceed with paying design and other preliminary costs for the current detention center repair project and new construction using county funds with the reasonable expectation that these expenditures will be reimbursed once, once debt financing is secured. The maximum principal amount of debt anticipated for this project, for project, for the project one, I'm sorry, project phase one. Um, I'm, I'm estimating ten thou- ten million dollars. Um, and then so project, the project phase two is up to fifty million dollars. So your approval will ensure the county remains compliant with federal reimbursement regulations and has the flexibility to move this important project forward. And the recommendation is just to improve, to approve the reimbursement resolution allowing the county to proceed with paying design and other preliminary costs for the current detention center repair project and new construction using county funds with the reasonable expectation that these expenditures will be reimbursed once debt financing is secured. The maximum principal reimbursement amount of debt anticipated for the new construction of the facility is fifty million dollars.
I get a motion?
Don't move.
Very good. Got a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay. The next item is a carts um, resolution for rope funding. At your June twenty twenty-five meeting, the board approved for carts to become the applicant for rope funding effective seven one of twenty twenty-five. And the approval requires a resolution that I should have presented to you all in June, I failed to do so. So the recommendation is just to approve the attached resolution which allows carts to apply for and directly receive the rope funding effective seven one twenty twenty-five.
Make that motion, second.
Have a motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And so the last item on my report is um, power of attorney for enterprise. Enterprise is requesting a P O A or power of attorney, which is needed in order to handle the title and registration of the leased vehicles. The recommendation is just to authorize the county manager to sign the P O A for enterprise to handle the title and registration of the leased vehicles.
Still move. Second.
Have a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Now we move on to our consent agenda item. Motion?
What do you got now?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
I'm, I'll make that motion. Approve a consent agenda.
Got a motion? Second, we got a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Now, Mr. Lane, the appointments, Kelly.
We have appointments for the month and also voting delegates for the N C A C C conference. Uh, the first item, appointments, is to appoint Brian Boyd, reappoint Brian Boyd to the Airport Authority. Reappoint Valencia Perry to the carts board. And reappoint Sandy Cowan, Mary Alstel, and uh, George Blackburn to the Library Board of Trustees.
Make a motion, we're reporting all of them, same positions. Second.
Got a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And the second items.
We've got it open on the audit committee. And um, Commissioner Perry has expressed some interest in being on that. So I'm, I'm making a motion to overturn that committee.
You said it had open because somebody came off, right?
Right, you were.
An audit committee, we need to replace the person on the audit committee?
Yeah.
Commissioner, you, you step down from the audit committee because it's your seat, okay, all right, just wanted to confirm, okay, all right.
Audit committee.
So did you, what did you?
I made a motion.
You made a motion?
Second.
You have second, okay, okay.
Okay, we've got a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
And the last item is to appoint a voting delegate and an alternate to the uh, N C A C C conference in August.
We're going to the, you going?
I'll be right.
Are you going?
Not right now, I'm not scared.
It's in Goldsboro, right?
Yeah, um, you going, right, um, Kelly?
Greenville.
That's one in Greenville, I want to.
It's in Greenville.
Greenville?
Uh, yes, sir, Greenville.
You wanna be the delegate?
I'll do it.
You wanna, you, we all agree?
I'm gonna appoint Leo Kelly as delegate for the N C A C C conference.
Second.
I'll do it.
Carol, you going?
Yeah, I'm going.
Let me forget, I'm only running now.
Don't worry, so you the voting delegate. So we have a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And can you include an alternate in that motion?
I'll be the alternate. In the motion. In the motion. Big motion. Did that satisfy?
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion going closed session?
I might get a motion going closed session.
Second?
Second.
Second, we got a motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? Closed session, thank you.